We will, I guess, first call the Plan Commission to order. I see we have Ryan Austin, Jeff, and Thad Kubaschak is online. And myself are present. And then let's call also at 6:02 PM, let's call the Common Council meeting to order. Looks like all council persons are present with Ryan doing a dual role. Thank you very much. We'll get into item three, which is, well, item one on the Plan Commission and item three on the Common Council's presentation regarding the paper mill recovery and redevelopment plan by the Community Development Department in consideration of recommendations of the plan. Mr. Kearns?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to confirm, are we live on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, unmuted, perfect. Thank you, everyone, Common Council, Plan Commission, and members of the public. I'm Kyle Kearns, many of you know me. We also have from our office Kiri Edmondson, Associate Planner. And then on Zoom, we have members of Vandewall joining us. It looks like right now we've got Sonya on and maybe expecting one other to join us, Scott, who were the project leads on this plan. Today, I'm going to be providing a presentation. You'll see it on the screen above. And then also hopefully on Zoom, I believe it's being cast. And I'll basically walk you through the plan. And then at the end of the plan, we'll take questions if they're related to, you know, the details of the plan and how it was constructed and so forth. We'll probably turn those over to the consultant, Sonya and Scott. And if there are questions that pertain, you know, to the city or, you know, future implementation of the plan, I can certainly address those. Prior to jumping into the presentation, I do want to note that when you're providing input and feedback at the end of the presentation, if it's in relation to formatting or grammar, you know, other things, I'd ask that maybe you hold that comment. I don't think today we need to go through grammatical issues or formatting issues, but I would ask after the meeting, you submit an email or you scheduled to meet with myself or Kiri to go over those to make sure that the final draft or the adopted version, right, that will be available into the future includes those corrections. With that being said, then, you know, I'd like to focus the input and feedback on kind of the bulk of the plan, the two sections, as well as the implementation chapter and what your overall thoughts are with regards to the content. And then obviously, if there's major changes based on the content or the outcomes identified in the plan, we will also again incorporate those within the document. With that being said, we will jump right into the plan here. Just want to pull it up. So first, I'm going to walk you through the intent of the plan. As a reminder, I've got a couple of slides to remind you how we got to this point. So originally, again, the intent of this plan was to develop a strategy to recover from the paper mill closing, which primarily resulted due to the pandemic. That happened in 2020. As you can recall, they identified about 900 employees that were going to be let go. Ultimately, there were more that have stayed on and operate in the converting part of the mill, as well as others with Sonoco, who's a less C within the space. So today, there's anywhere from, you know, 200 to 250 employees still on site. Obviously, as the city's major employer, with the amount of acreage, a little over 1,000 acres, as well as being about 5% of our value, this had a significant impact on the economy. And so this plan or the thought process was to pursue the creation of this plan to help us to rebound from this economic shock, to aid in our recovery efforts long term into the future, knowing that, you know, we'd possibly have some opportunities into the future and want to capitalize on those. So it doesn't remain vacant, so it doesn't become an attractive nuisance like many other facilities are across the country. And ultimately, then, from that, you know, the goal is, right, to hopefully regain lost jobs, sales and production through redevelopment over time. We pursued with the assistance of the North Regional Plan Commission or North Central Regional Plan Commission to utilize federal aid under the CARES Act and apply for a U.S. Economic Development Administration grant in the amount of 144,000, as well as to couple that with a Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation grant for 36,000 for a total project cost of 180,000. There wasn't any city investment other than city staff time and then having to do an audit at the end of this, which will probably be a couple thousand dollars. So again, it was primarily funded through the assistance of these federal and state agencies. Again, the thought moving forward was that this strategy would be outlined in the form of a document and used as a guide when responding to opportunities or changes on the site, whether that be sales or the redevelopment of different components, which again are all outlined within the plan. We also recognized initially that the site is under private ownership. And so obviously, as the city entity, you know, we're limited in our actions to, right, govern what happens on the site. And right, so the success of any strategy would likely hinge on cooperation with either Verso or current owner Billaroo or Sonoco or future owners. And so we don't have, you know, we don't, we're not steering the ship by any means with any redevelopment that happens on the site. But again, that this document would help guide the way we respond to different opportunities, and we would have somewhat of a strategy moving forward with being able to capitalize on those opportunities. So the timeline for this process began about November of 2020, when we worked with Regional Plan Commission to apply for the grant. The grant was awarded in April, or the notice came in April, it was signed in May of 2021. We then released an RFP in May of 2021, ultimately selected Vandewall and Associates out of Madison in October of 2021. They began right away, we did a paper mill site tour, we toured the externals of the site. Thank you to Verso employees at that time. They then began doing a lot of the preliminary research and data collection, and we had a few public meetings. We had a joint meeting of elected officials at the Aquatic Center, many of you participated in, that was in May of 2022. And then we had a public meeting at the library in June of '22. As part of this, the consultant Vandewall also did a Forest Industries of the Future Symposium, where we invited several agencies and individuals within the paper industry to participate in, you know, just talking generally about the industry, how technology has changed in the industry. And Sonya, who's on, can probably describe that further if you're interested. But there is a summary of that symposium, and I think there were over, you know, 75 participants in that symposium. And then here we are today with having received the first section of the plan in March of this year, and then the second section in June, as well as the implementation portion of that. So with regards to the project scope, right, there was, Vandewall kind of identified that there's two main components to this plan. One is the recovery strategy, a focus on the economy, on the industry, emerging trends in the industry. And then number two is then focusing on redevelopment and planning around the site, right, looking at the components of the paper mill and how they're best suited to be redeveloped, maybe what their strengths are, as well as, you know, the state of some of the buildings. Lastly, as part of kind of both components of the plan is the implementation chapter that's at the end of the plan. Starting with the first section, the Economic Opportunities Report, again, that was really to, you know, synthesize data, to look at the economy, you know, how it was, how it fared after the closure, where we're at with regards to, you know, employment within the region. It also looked at, you know, where are there opportunities in the markets associated or related to the paper industry or beyond, right, thinking about renewable energy and so forth, other uses that could accommodate the site. And again, these were identified, you know, based off of some of those, that market analysis that was done. So again, workforce data was collected, industry trends, both within paper as well as outside, other biomass products, for example. So while some of these, some of what was forecast in this first chapter may be pretty far-fetched, nonetheless, you know, with changing times, improvements in technology, perhaps down the road, some of these things could become a reality on the site, or at least the site could cater to some of what was presented in this chapter. So again, in summary, you know, this is some of the stuff that was included. You know, we've got, we looked at transportation, we looked at the region, you know, how far we're pulling in the region, what other trends exist in the area. We drilled into the site in this chapter to look at the different components of the mill and then look at the diversity of markets in the biomass industry. And then we looked outside of, you know, what other agencies have done. There are some other references to other plans, like the one here by the U.S. Forest Service, as well as, you know, partnering and identifying other agencies like the Wisconsin Paper Council. For a while, you know, the cooperative was moving forward with assistance from local representatives, leading that kind of component. That unfortunately, to my knowledge, has sizzled out, but they were, you know, a stakeholder in this at one point. So again, not just looking here, but kind of the state generally and how it was faring with the paper industry. The conclusions that were drawn from that data analysis really were categorized into five kind of, you know, different topics. And we'll walk through them, so the five of them are listed here. I won't review them now, but we'll get into them here moving forward. Oh, I guess we won't get into them. My apologies. So I will describe them. So the first one was emerging forest products production. Those are, that was to identify, again, other products that could be produced on site, mostly that relate to the forest product industry, but maybe might not be coated paper. There might be food-grade products or other offshoots of, you know, what's produced. And that's also kind of identified in item number five, value-added agriculture. Getting into number two, they identified, you know, that there's a need and this could accommodate an industrial and logistics park. And we drill into, in the next chapter, the areas in which these different opportunities are best suited on site. Number three was renewable energy park. So again, given the amount of acreage here, underutilized land that doesn't have buildings on it, it could accommodate renewable energy, and already does with regards to the dam, the hydroelectric. It could also accommodate a new pulping facility, not the current operations, but something else within the biomass industry. And then number five is value-added agriculture production. So again, thinking about offshoots like ammonia or other byproducts that are created from biomass generation. So with that, with those five opportunities identified, the next part of the plan was to focus in on the site itself, to identify the different components of the site, and then identify how those opportunities can work within, or which sites are best suited for those opportunities. So again, you'll see here in the next couple of slides that there are five sections that have been identified. These five sections primarily relate to historic uses, but also natural geography, with Site One or District One being the southernmost portion of the paper mill, which is, you know, the base mill, PM16, as well as the converting facility. Aside from the base mill, you know, PM16 and the converting operations are in, you know, probably the better shape when you're talking about infrastructure. This area also includes the dam as well. District number two, as you go north, is the pulping operations or biomass processing. This is where you, you know, you've got some other additional facilities on the east and west side of the roadway, the adjacent roadway. As you move further north yet, you get into the wood yard, the capped landfill in this area is fairly open, but again, is limited given that capped landfill, but could accommodate, you know, renewable energy, given the vast amount of land here. Sliding to the left, I'm going to skip ahead to District Five. That's an area of undeveloped woodland primarily, that has some wetlands that could develop as residential. And then furthest north is the wastewater treatment plant. Again, is a large swath of land, mostly, you know, underutilized, but again, that has the wastewater treatment facilities. I've already somewhat mentioned some of this, but what Vandewall did is again tie the economic opportunities along with these districts. So again, with District One being on the southern side of the site, they've identified that there is opportunity for reusing some of the buildings. This is where Sonoco operates, so they're in the base mill portion further south, nearest the Jackson Street Bridge. And there's opportunity there, again, to split that facility from the rest of the site and possibly have, create some existing less C space. The larger buildings might require some accommodations or modifications. Those include PM16, the very long building, as well as the converting facility adjacent to the river. And then obviously, the hydro dam with regards to the FERC licenses and the utility Quipco, there is opportunity there that that could be maybe tied into another grid, or because it's a subsidiary, perhaps sold off as such. District Two, moving further north, is, has been identified to be in worse overall shape than District One, and probably isn't as suitable for building reuse because of that. It's probably more, or it's probably more realistic to say that the existing biomass processing will probably ultimately be raised, but it could accommodate in its place, given the adjacent wood yard, a new biomass processing facility. So they've identified that as being an option. And then there is some, there's an adjacent site to the west that could potentially be redeveloped, that's in fairly decent shape, that could be utilized as office or another industrial type user. District Three, as you go further north, is the railroad wood yard, as well as the landfill. They've identified that, again, this could accommodate, if there is a new biomass facility, this could be utilized for storage or continue to be a wood yard that would serve that facility. And then the landfill could be a solar opportunity, given the large amount of land there and the limitations to excavations, footings, foundations, things of that nature. There is some vacant land as well, 3B on the screen, that could be industrial redevelopment opportunities also. District Four, jumping even further north, is the wastewater treatment facility. This might be the most limited opportunity, aside from District Three, just given that, you know, the facility is, you know, it's not the newest facility. It's operating right now at a very low capacity, so it does have the potential to increase capacity, but given, you know, the state of the facility, it may not be realistic for it to continue to operate. So Sonoco and Nine Dragons, I believe, were identified as, you know, transferring their waste here to be processed. But again, I think the intent or the thought is that perhaps if that ever ceased, this wastewater treatment facility would no longer serve a use. And redevelopment of such, you know, could occur, but would be fairly costly. There is some vacant area, 4C and 4B, that could be a potential site for solar, other renewable energies. And then finally, District Five is the last district, which is in the middle of the site, just below District Four and just west of District Three. This is an area that primarily is wooded currently. It does have some wetlands on it. It could be some sort of mixed use or residential, depending on how it's built out, but obviously a wetland delineation study would have to be done to identify developable area in this district. After that, there, at the end of the entire document is a implementation plan. Vandewall identified really three timelines for implementation. They're on the screen here. Phase one basically is now, where Billaroo currently owns and operates the facility, right? They've got their converting operation occurring currently. They haven't necessarily announced plans for the future. So the implementation strategies identified here is primarily to continue to talk to Billaroo, to continue to communicate, to build our relationship, but also kind of keep some other agencies at the periphery of those conversations in the event that we get to Phase Two. The consultant has identified that Phase Two, then, is after Billaroo announces disposition of the property, whether it's an entirety or different components become available, then the communication shifts from, you know, being more proactive in bringing some of those agencies, helping to market the site, cater to the developer, cater to the interested buyer, and make up for any gaps along the way, kind of inject ourself into that process, obviously sharing this document. And then Phase Three, the implementation strategies are after, right, a buyer has been selected. How can we participate, you know, in offsetting the costs? Because as, you know, in all three phases, Vandewall has identified that, you know, there's probably going to be substantial assistance necessary to redevelop this site. And it's probably going to be at the federal level, the state level, and locally. Locally, meaning, you know, through tax increment financing or other in-kind assistance. And again, that's, it's hard to say exactly what that type of assistance is without having a buyer, without having an end user. Again, as I alluded to at the beginning of the plan, you know, we're not necessarily steering the development, but I think this plan will help us to respond if and when some other readaptive use or sale occurs. We can at least reference this document to be a guide for us to take the next step, to participate and move forward. This is a slide identifying those implementation tasks. I won't get into many of those details. Again, it's in the end of the chapter. With that, I will, I'll turn it over to the consultant to answer any questions that you may have with regards to either of the three chapters. And I believe Scott is on now. So Scott Harrington is with Vandewall, he was the project lead, and Sonya Crusell as well is on, who was the planner that worked on this document. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kyle. Does Plan Commission or Council have any questions? It's a lot to take in. Yeah, if you got some questions, go ahead.
I have question, a lot of questions. I guess I'll just start with, I think the plan is very thorough. I read through it, I appreciate that. It, look, we all are familiar with the property and the mill, and looking at it just from an outside perspective, if you go stand outside of it, it's a lot, it takes up a lot of space, it's a lot of land, it's a very large building, it's a very large task, and I think that's addressed in the plan. But what we'll do with it is going to essentially be up to Billaroo, is my understanding. From a city perspective, and one of the things mentioned in the plan is that we could tighten up some ordinances and perhaps approach them in a stance of enforcing those. So I guess I'll ask this question to the planner who wrote the document. What ordinances are those and what impact could we have by enforcing them?
I can take that question, Scott. So we have a salvage ordinance right now that requires a permit and a review. Anybody that's looking to scrap or salvage a site like this has to put together an implementation plan on how they're going to do it, the state of the site in terms of what's going to be left there. That plan has to come before the city for review and essentially approval, just to ensure that, you know, we're not left with an attractive nuisance that's becoming, you know, more of a problem for the city. I will say that that ordinance was drafted after a template by the state, and so it does mirror what other communities have. There could be ways in which we try to tighten that ordinance up, but at the end of the day, you know, they've got certain protections as a private property to be able to, you know, utilize their property as they see fit, especially if it meets the city zoning code and other requirements. But again, this is at least an ordinance that would require them to think and put together a plan and bring that plan before the city to provide comment, the public can comment on it, before they, right, go ahead and just demolish large swaths of the building or scrap different things within the facility.
Thank you. So you mentioned the zoning ordinance. I think that might be where we could go with this. What could we change in the zoning ordinance to make it so that property is either maintained, resold, or at some point, not now, we might have to be realistic that there will be no more development there, and that building could sit there like they do in Detroit and the rest of the Rust Belt for many decades. So what zoning ordinances could we tighten up or place in the code specifically for that site? Are those identified? Do we need to do something that hire a firm perhaps that can identify those?
So we're somewhat limited under the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance does dictate uses that can occur. For example, the site's own manufacturing, so it identifies what sort of uses are permitted or conditional within that district. So we can regulate uses. For example, you know, you can't operate a restaurant within a manufacturing district. But there is a different, we have two different manufacturing districts, so there is, you know, kind of a low-intensity manufacturing district and a high-intensity district. And it, you know, most of the zoning standards relate to new development, so when you think of setbacks, you think of lot size, you think of impervious surface, there are architectural standards within the code. So while zoning is a form of regulation, I don't necessarily think it, we'd have the ability to, you know, significantly amend the zoning ordinance to prevent, you know, or to ensure that something happens on the site. The best way to do that is probably through our local building codes, which if the buildings become in that bad of a dilapidated state, we can start issuing orders to, you know, raise or essentially repair those facilities and restore the property to a natural state, very similar to what we've done on some of the buildings in downtown, some on the Triangle property, just given their unfit state and the, their, you know, there being an attractive nuisance and, you know, a safety concern for the general public. And that's again through the division of our Building Inspector's Office, which is under Community Development. That would be the best way, though, to, you know, ensure that something's done or that the buildings don't deteriorate into a state of disrepair.
Thank you. So that's the area I'd like us to focus in on going forward in the future. I think there's an appropriate time to wait for Billaroo to do what they're going to do, sell the property, vacate the property. sell the property, vacate the property. I mean, we, we don't know the current status of their business, but long-term, I, I think we should start focusing in on that to perhaps if the buildings do get in a condition where they're, no one's going to be interested in purchasing the property and they end up sitting there for a long time, that we have the right codes in place or the right ordinances in place, that it can be punitive to leave that property on our riverfront for years, decades. We don't know. So that, that was kind of where I was getting at is, is what can we do as a city? I think we do need to have a plan. We do need to give it time for redevelopment or sale. But from what I've heard of the state the mill is in, some of that is questionable. And some of the, the plans talk specifically about what we can do with the different sites. And I think the renewable energy is something that you, you could put anywhere. You could put that on any place, that you could put renewable energy there. I, I hope that the mill gets up and producing again in some form. In regards to the buildings, I guess I have a question about, with the large paper machines and other equipment in there, are they reusable as stated in this plan? Like I think one of the, well, one of the mentioned in here was that perhaps a food company could go in there or there was other plans. Is that even viable in, in these type of buildings?
Yeah, I'll let VanderWaal respond to that question.
Yeah, hi, this is Scott Harrington. Yeah, hi, this is Scott Harrington with VanderWaal. Let me first say that I apologize that I'm not there in person I intended to be, but I'm finding myself home recovering from a health issue and unable to travel. So glad to be able to join you electronically. So can you repeat the question? I didn't quite hear all of it.
Sure. So the property itself is obviously unique. Parts of it are aged. How much of the plan outside of the renewable energy part? Cause I feel you could really do that anywhere. So that's an easy one to understand. Is it realistic for some of these opportunities, the five of them listed, to happen on the site with the buildings having large paper machines in them, other equipment? Is, is this a realistic vision or is this just a, a hope and a dream that someone would come in and do something with this? Is it just, is it a paper mill or can it be repurposed?
No, I think there's a lot of opportunity for repurposing for, you know, really all of those opportu- all of the economic ideas that are out there. You know, what I think we envision is that the, you know, property is going to be sold to a redevelopment company that is going to do some, I'm sorry, somebody trying to talk?
Nope, continue, go ahead.
Okay. There will be a redevelopment company that will kind of take this on as a long-term plan. There are many companies nationwide that specialize in this. Couple of examples are the GM plant down in Jamesville and the Oscar Meyer plant here in Madison, where they will do some scrapping and demolition and then really sort of set the site up for redevelopment. And so PM sixteen, I would expect that machine to be kind of scrapped out. That building can then be subdivided into, you know, multiple spaces for different industries or fabricators or warehousing. Cause the building itself is incredibly solid. And I would see the same thing happening potentially with the other building there along the river, the converting operation once the Billaroo vacates that. That's kind of unclear when that would occur, but that building itself is also pretty solid. So, and then likewise the base mill, Sanoco occupies a good portion of it. There's space that they don't occupy, but they are interested in owning the whole building and subleasing out that additional space to other tenants or for warehousing. So I think there's a lot of reuse potential because those bones are pretty solid and the cost to demo that is not worth than the land that it sits on. Likewise, the rail yard, rail infrastructure is very expensive to build new and there's quite a bit of it in the rail yard. So I would see interest in that as part of another operation or even as a kind of a standalone rail operation. So yes, renewable energy is sort of part of things, but I, I think a lot of the infrastructure and buildings lend themselves to any number of different uses, especially once they would kind of get split up.
Thank you. Can you speak specifically to a, some of the older manufacturing plants you mentioned and, and how they were redeveloped? And, and what happened with the equipment and how that compares to our situation?
Yeah, so they, often what you see is that the machinery has a lot of value as machinery and as scrap metal. And so eventually it would be removed and there would be, you know, value and return to that from, from the buyer, from the redeveloper. And then the building itself can be reconfigured. So that's a pretty standard way that you see these industrial sites being reused. And splitting the, you know, the property up into multiple lots is pretty common as well. There's a lot of front-end costs associated with that to figure out how each building could kind of stand alone and how access to it would be provided and, and getting different utility connections to it where sometimes things are kind of all tied together and how to separate all those. But that's the sort of standard approach that is taken in a site like this and that we would envision would occur here.
Thank you. Overall, I think the plan is optimistic. I err on the side of that I, I think as a city, we should still tighten up areas of the building code that we could apply, certainly to the areas that in this plan are noted as possibly not as attractive to redevelop as the other ones, the ones that are currently being leased and the others mentioned. Just so that going forward in the future, we're not setting this up when this council's gone or this planning commission's gone, that this comes back on their lap and we didn't have the right things in place to do something with the property that is sat even longer. Hopefully it doesn't. The plan identifies the areas that there is potential in and the areas there is not. So I think we should start focusing in on the areas there's not as much potential and hope that, you know, Sanoco renews their lease and that other companies come in there and want to scrap and lease the, the former property is what we'd like to see. But there is areas that have been identified that will not see such opportunities. So I think we focus in on that and put those in place. So we have those to rely on in the future if we need to continue to move this process forward for Billaroo as they continue to own the building and have not expressed any interest in doing anything with it, to my knowledge.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I, so you'd mentioned that obviously we expect sixteen to be scrapped. So, or whoever bought the building would expect sixteen to be scrapped. I guess are, are we completely determined or are we estimating this, that this company is, this building is not viable as a paper company anymore? That sixteen would be scrapped and, and that we're probably going to end, it could potentially end up with the exact same kind of situation that they had in Port Edwards, where they came in, pretty much scrapped the entire building, left, blew the town. We don't know that, we, obviously our lack of communication with Billaroo is, is integral in where we go from here, but we don't know that their plan is to scrap this or that their plan is to sell this for scrap at this point. And so I'm just concerned about putting the cart before the horse on this. I get what you're saying about putting in ordinances to prevent that type of thing, but we don't know that Billaroo isn't planning to utilize that building. I don't know how we can ever find out. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
If I, yeah, I respond to that. Yeah, I mean, we, we don't know. And, you know, what we understand, you know, on our team, we're the lead consultant, but we had a, a few sub consultants with us and one of whom is the former plant manager there who's now with another paper company up towards Wausau. The weakest link really in the whole operation is the pulp mill. It, it's got a lot of deficiency issues in the way that it was, it kind of expanded over the years, that it, it's just not very efficient. PM sixteen is, you know, relatively speaking, not that old. And there's another mill in the Fox Valley that had a very, very similar machine that was able to successfully convert that to making more of a paper board. So it is possible that PM sixteen could be used again in some form to make some form of, of paper product, but potentially the pulp would be brought in from somewhere else. So we, we really don't know, you know, exactly where that would end up. And when the timber co-op was, you know, looking at the property and, and trying to make an offer on it, that was sort of their goal was to convert PM sixteen to more of a paperboard product and to continue to use that. So our, our plan is not completely predicated on the fact that that machine would go away or that there wouldn't be maybe some paper use on the property. But it just seems highly unlikely that a single entity would, you know, buy the entire property and attempt to more or less run the same operation that Verso did or, you know, to use the entire site. So it, it would be perfectly compatible with the rest of the pieces that we've identified if that building and that machine were, you know, to be used to make a paper product. But doing so probably wouldn't necessitate much of the other property to kind of support it in the way that it had in the past when we had a full pulp operation and a converting operation as well. So I, I hope that, you know, kind of clarifies that, that we're not suggesting that the machine needs to go away or that it can't be reused. We're just saying another option if it isn't reused is that building has a lot of value as a structure and it could be repurposed for something else.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the fact that you mentioned that, that there is still a possibility of conversion of that machine for paperboard. Obviously, I don't, I don't see any reason to, I don't have any pipe dreams that we're going to bring it back as a coated paper machine. I understand that, but I, I, I hope there's still some thought, maybe hopefully in Billaroo's mind to use that to make brown paper. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Jake.
So in regards to what I was speaking about earlier and what's mentioned in the document about tightening up codes and you mentioned specifically the building code for these properties that may become dilapidated. Should that be added to the plan or is this something we would do outside of it? While we have the consultants available or before we approve this plan, should that be added or is this something we would take up separately?
The implementation portion does mention, you know, just to shore up our city's ordinances. So I do think it's in there. It is something we can take a closer look at. We did look at the, our scrapping ordinance back in 2020 and it did, again, pretty much mirror the state's template. We can take a look at it again, perhaps see if there's any necessary changes or under the law that, that would allow us to regulate the use or uses. And then again, we can, we can try to look at our local building code and again, see, sure that up and, and make, make any necessary changes. Obviously those changes as their ordinance would have to go through legislative and then come back before council for approval.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, I think we take a strong look at that. Hopefully, are, is this consultant firm available to assist with this or would this be a different?
I think this is it.
Okay. Well, I, I appreciate the honesty and the discussion here and the document itself. I hope we can take up those other issues separate and continue to move this forward.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing done. Kyle?
Mayor, I don't know if you wanted to invite any members of the public to provide comment in this forum. Thank you.
Anybody in the audience wish to make any comment? Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Tom Muse. Basically I have questions, being a Wisconsin Rapids resident and living within a very close distance of all these properties. I grew up and I also worked at the former Korenzo plant or what is now Sanoco. So I do understand the processes that are going on inside. With the, my understanding with the properties being used for food vending, it would take a lot of upgrades to even make it, to the point where even the paper they're, they're using now is used in paper product containers and they have to scan it to see if there's any metal particles or plastic into the paper. So I know they already have some of those things in place, but for most of the older buildings that were constructed before 1990, I doubt they would ever pass any kind of, you know, cleanliness inspection. Most of the buildings are infested either by cockroaches or other, you know, animals. And also the amount of contamination that's probably in the ground under, underneath all of these facilities probably wouldn't make it really desirable for a food plant. Also in the beginning here, because it is a private entity, I also understand that from a government agency are limited on what you can do. But is eminent domain coming to that anyplace? I understand that between the Fourth and Fourteenth Amendment that government can't necessarily come in and tell a property owner what to do. You talk about adding more ordinances on and stuff like that. As a homeowner, I know personally what some of the ordinances here have pressurized onto the public between my own property and the properties all the way up 11th Avenue putting the sidewalks in. Is there a place where we can say eminent domain for public safety that these buildings are not met up to living conditions or, or pollution, period? As they decay, it is polluting the ground that's underneath them, plus the water that runs right past them. So is it something that we can look at? I'm waiting to hear from the DNR representative here. Is there an impact on the community in pollution from the buildings just sitting there? Is that something the state can step in and, and put a halt to that necessarily that you don't have the ability to do? Is that?
Thank you. Kyle, did you have any responses to any of those?
Yeah, so I think, you know, given the size of the site, I think, you know, the, the speaker's right in that, you know, the, the dam, for example, operates under its FERC license and that's, you know, a federal agency that has some pretty high requirements to.
you know, a federal agency that has some pretty high requirements to the power generation on the site. So if, if a certain component on the site, either that or the cap landfill were to, you know, fall into disrepair, I think you'd see that federal agency or state agency such as the DNR step in and probably have ultimate authority over that. You know, with regards to the floodway, you also have the EPA. I think from the building side of things, you know, safety to the public, general welfare of the public, if they become in disrepair again, it would be our local building codes that we could cite. But I would, I would foresee if this would, any component were deteriorate in any way, it'd probably be a joint effort between the city and whatever agency ultimately has control, again, depending on what component it is and where it is located on the site. Scott, did you have any, anything to add?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is that, you know, there are some DNR case files for spots on the property that had some known form of contamination for fuel tanks or spills or what have you, but there's no question that as part of a redevelopment that a more thorough environmental analysis, you know, is going to be needed and whoever ends up with the property is, is going to understand that and need to comply with that. So I'm trying to remember, I don't think there are any open case files, I think most of them were closed for the contamination that's known, but given the age of the property and the type of use that's occurred there, you know, chances are that there's additional subsurface contamination that, you know, isn't really been fully documented yet that would be as redevelopment would occur on this site and would be a draft accordingly.
Thank you, Scott. Any other questions, comments? Go ahead, Jake.
So regarding your comment on the environmental analysis, who would we look to for that? You mentioned that the future property owner might need to do that. Is that something that we could do as a city or look to an agency to do? More what I meant and if, if not, can we talk to a state legislator, someone and they can come in and do that? Who would be the person responsible for having the environmental analysis done?
Kyle? Oh, go ahead, Scott, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's all regulated by the DNR and so there's, I don't think really a whole lot in that respect that you can do as a municipality in terms of regulatory. There may be some things ultimately that you could do as environmental conditions are known and different types of remediation are identified that you could maybe assist with in helping with some of that. But that's really under the purview of the DNR.
Thank you. And it's kind of a much larger scale of what we're dealing with with the foundry, just more of a very large scale. Any other questions or comments? Jerry?
My name is Jerry Bach. Been over 20 years, I guess, since I sat in that place, but I don't relish what you have to go through here, but a question that we haven't heard much of is how do we transition from the loss of the tax revenue and whatnot with the mill being closed and obviously we've lost a lot of jobs, but, you know, the manufacturers' tax and all of that. Has there been any discussion? I have to admit, I'm not paying attention like I maybe should, but it's a question that people ask me and I just wondered what comments you might have relative to that. Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I think obviously playing a proactive role to economic development, promoting the community, welcoming business growth. Ironically, at the same time that the mill closed, a few months later, Metelco in the East Commerce Park opened. They're a very high-value, important business to the community. They've since, you know, in their three years of operation, expanded once, they last year put up a very large accessory structure to house some of their scrap aluminum, so they're, they're continuing to grow and I think recognizing the importance that they play in the community, both with their employment base and, you know, ironically, they've hired some mill employees at the same time that, you know, the mill closed and they opened. Being able to, you know, establish a good relationship and rapport with those businesses to ensure that they can continue to grow, I think is crucial to being, you know, able to offset that cost in the event that, you know, a mill such as this goes offline and the buildings become demolished and then it leaves us with, right, zero value property essentially. So, yeah, that's what our office is continuing to look to do and to be an attractive place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
I guess so everybody's aware, we have provided this document with management of the North America Billaroo's and so hopefully we'll have a conversation here in the near future with them also.
Yeah, and I, you know, again, I would just add that with the community survey that we did, the kind of two priorities that the community identified were creating jobs and reusing the property and that's really dovetailed nicely with what we think the greatest opportunities are. So it's a little hard now to kind of put hard job numbers on what could be there, but there's a lot of potential there. And so we see this site continuing to be a major employer or, you know, employment site for the community, but rather than being one large, single entity, it may be several smaller ones. So the focus here definitely is on bringing in new businesses and creating really well-paying, good manufacturing jobs primarily to try to backfill a lot of what was lost when the mill closed.
Thank you, Scott. Go ahead, Ryan.
It was mentioned earlier that with, with the several operations that are still continuing on the grounds and the infrastructure being tied together, my concern is, is some of these ongoing operations could essentially be forced out if some of this infrastructure was eventually abandoned or discontinued by Billaroo or potential new owners. Is there anything that we can do from the city side to plan or at least try to ensure that there's options for, say, a Sunoco if some of those infrastructures are essentially taken out of the picture?
I'll chime in first and I'll let Scott clean up afterwards. So we've had a pretty good relationship with Sunoco along the way through this process. They ironically have, you know, during, during and after the closure, have started to separate themselves with regards to the infrastructure and the space that they operate in just to become more efficient. They do have, you know, a pretty big decision to make with regards to the electrical power they're, they're receiving as well as the wastewater that they're sending to the treatment plant. And so we'll continue to maintain those communications and obviously as the plan identifies, roping in additional agencies in the event that there's some sort of incentives or ways that we can, right, retain that moving forward. Obviously having those jobs downtown, keeping the site active, you know, is of great benefit. And I think honestly, that's probably one of the more realistic opportunities that's in front of us now is Sunoco within that space. So yes, it's something that we're aware of and definitely want to ensure we can maintain moving forward. Do you have anything to add, Scott?
No, I, you know, I think the city's done a great job of really staying in contact with Sunoco. They clearly want to stay in that building and continue that, they want to purchase that building. They haven't been able to come to terms with Billaroo and, you know, we're hopeful that if there's a buyer for the entire site, that Sunoco would have more success working with somebody in that capacity and being able to do that. So I'm not really sure what else, to kind of get back to the question about what specifically could the city do at this point. I think the outreach has been really positive. I, you know, Kyle is in regular contact with them. We talked with Sunoco, I think, three or four times during this process and, you know, like, kind of like the rest of us, they're waiting to just sort of see, you know, what Billaroo kind of decides. So I, I don't know, right now, there's a whole lot more that the city could do to be proactive other than to, you know, continue to communicate to Billaroo that you would like to see them and Sunoco come to terms so that you could be, you know, return, retain Sunoco for the long run.
Excuse me, I've been part of discussions with wastewater and wastewater questions and hoping to address wastewater concerns in the future.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none. I guess Jake pointed out also, where can the public view this document?
So you've noticed that the document says draft, you know, throughout and has draft watermarks. Our intent is, over the next week or two, to incorporate some of the grammatical things that we found, clean up the document, remove those, you know, the draft and actually have the final form. Up and on the website, we have a dedicated page to this on the city's website under the Community Development Department. So within, again, that week or two, we'll have that final version up for all members of the public to view. And again, I would encourage anyone else who has, you know, if you've marked up your document with, with different grammatical things, feel free to, to scan that or hand that over or if additional questions arise to contact our office and we can have a conversation. Thank you.
So I guess the first item would be for Plan Commission. What are you looking for action on to adopt the plan?
You know, I think, I think, yeah, maybe to adopt it and, you know, place it on file would be appropriate. It's not, it's not an ordinance, it's not a policy, so a public hearing and nothing's required, but I think recognition of the plan and action in doing so would be appropriate from both bodies.
Okay. So Plan Commission.
I'll make a motion to adopt the plan and place it on file.
Sounds good. We have a motion from Austin. Seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion by the Plan Commission? Okay, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And does anybody oppose? That motion carries. And I think we could probably, I'll make a motion to adjourn the Plan Commission meeting.
Second.
And we have a second by Austin. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? That motion carries. And we can go on to the committee council. Agenda, thank you. And what are your wishes as a council?
I'll move to adopt the plan.
Oh, second.
So a motion by Bemke, let me write that down. Seconded by Zachar. Any other further discussion on it? Okay, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? That motion carries. We're on to item four, which is adjournment. We have a motion by Veneman. Seconded by Pollock. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? That motion carries. Thank you very much.